I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're right.
The case of first, it must be a cripple of the midas.
Second. The street demands for a.
Were there any questions or discussion on the minutes? Hey, if there is no question or discussion, we'll vote. So all those in favor?
Alright.
opposed? They have motion passed. Uh, approval of claims.
So moved. Second.
Any question?
Yep.
The the Fisher's lease agreement?
Yes.
Is that renewed legally?
Our coffee years.
Thanks.
Cheaper to um rent some of them than it was to purchase them.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, our ones at the elementary gets such heavy use, but it's cheaper to rent them and get new ones every other year.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they just need to fall down, yeah.
We're getting good service.
Oh, yeah. They're super good about the incident, something's wrong, come down and they're there quite often and respond quickly.
Ten thousand dollars to Highwood.
Tuition.
Is that?
One.
Uh, would just be a family, right? No?
I think there was more.
I mean, I had. We'll have more this next year.
Have we gotten a tuition check?
We have not. I've sent them out. We haven't got any yet.
They're supposed to give them.
No, they haven't until December to pay them, so. We just went ahead and their bandit off.
Not like, I stand.
That's our only tuition checks we got, right?
Nope, we have a big one. We'll have to write to um it's called Liberty Elementary. Um, that's where all the um uh, what's the colony? Sunnybrook? Uh, Sunnybrook, and that colony that's by my house. The new one out there on Gooseville.
I saw that was sunny for.
That is Sunnybrook.
What is Sunny?
There's Sunnybrook and then some at um
Loma.
Loma.
And you wrote that check?
I've not, they have not since February, yeah. And it'll be substantial.
Yeah, we're ready for it.
So when I did the math, the tuition that we have coming in covers all the tuition we have going out, basically a lot. So we didn't benefit from it and we didn't, wasn't something that we had to levy for. So you have the option to levy, permissively levy for it. Uh, well, and then you have you can only permissive levy so much, but you have the option to have a voted levy for it, a tuition levy voted. And I felt like we already had a voted levy that we really wanted to pass it to add another one on.
Right.
And where it wasn't hurting us, where it was a wash, we actually come out on top by like four thousand dollars. So I just felt like in the interest of voters to not run a voted levy for tuition.
So which school is it is? They go to the Loma one? Where will the church be going to?
Liberty Elementary.
I don't know.
Is it a Loma Elementary too?
Nope.
No, it's a common elementary. It's north of Chester.
It is north of Chester.
But what about the Loma one?
That's supposedly where they're all going.
South of Loma, there's someplace.
They gotta go.
And there is a, they do, so there is a school, a elementary school south of Loma.
Yeah.
It is their own private charter school. So they won't. Sometimes they will, sometimes they won't send tuition for that. But some of them have chosen to go to this other school. I don't know. It's very confusing.
If we get that bill, it might be interesting waiting closer to the summer deadline to
Yeah.
write that check.
Yeah, well, so what you'll do.
Especially when we wait to see some come in.
Well, yeah, you'll, what you'll do is you'll wait until you get your first state aid payment. So you wouldn't want to pay it until Octoberish. And you have to remember, all your tuition bills that you're paying are in arrears. So we're paying
Last year.
For last year. So you, and you pay based on the number of days that student attended. So if you had a student that was part of the year here and part of the year there, you only pay for the days student attended out of district.
In the Liberty Elementary, that's a charter school?
It is, no, it's a Liberty Elementary. And it is a elementary school located the address of Sombers?
It's Sombers.
That's northeast, northwest of Esther.
Yeah.
We looked it up.
How does that work? That's, you know. Somber, that's the border.
Yep.
This is.
But they reside in Ferengi and Fergus. I just was there yesterday. And they reside and show up out of and everything within our school district.
And they they go there five days a week? Or forty?
Uh, must be five because they go a hundred and eighty-two days.
Yeah.
We only go a hundred and seventy-two days.
Do they provide documentation?
Um.
I guess that is correct, yeah.
And they're not required to. Um, this is all they're required to give you. Is this attendance agreement?
Yeah.
And by the state law, their board of trustees signs it and we acknowledge it. You no longer have to approve them. You just have to acknowledge that you thought and you have a student in the out of district. There's really nothing you can, it is, but it's.
Sombers. Your manager should.
The elementary. And I looked them up online. Um, and they had two whole instruction days, a hundred and eighty-seven days. That's a lot of instruction.
Yeah.
And that it is. Okay. Are there any more questions on claims?
Sorry.
You're good. Are we all good?
Yeah, we're good.
Yep. I think we're good up here.
Um, so we have a no, few approved and seconded, so all those in favor?
Alright.
Hey, opposed? Public comment on non incident items. Do not have anyone here. Uh, communications to and from the board. We have received a thank you card from the venue handling. Go ahead and pass that over. Um, arch chair report. I do not have anything for that. So all your updates, consideration.
Evening, everybody. Make this short and sweet, hopefully. So just got a few things to report on. Uh, got a call today about our new traveler. We're still about three to four weeks out receiving that, or them receiving it and finalizing it, so. Um. And that's with getting the ramp installed down there and everything, so. We could see it probably five weeks. That's, that's him being cautious on timeframe. We could see it sooner, but he was just hanging out a little bit further, so. That's where we're at. We did receive our new route bus. We received it in July. Um, it's got AC in the back for the kids now, so they should appreciate that. Uh, can I go over the hires now or do we go over that later?
It's under.
Yeah, it's under hires.
You can make the recommendation because then you'll hire them later.
Um, I had two people come in and apply. The first one is Chad Hartzell. He's a semi-retired individual. He's out working for boards, driving a truck. Uh, he does want to come in and possibly help out with coaching at some point, so he's getting a double threat on that aspect. But he wants to come in and he's an extracurricular driver, so.
And he's licensed.
He has the CDL. He does not have passenger in school bus, so we have to get that for him. So he does qualify for the lower sign-on bonus. But he seems like a pretty good individual and I would recommend that we hire him.
I agree.
Uh, the second one, do we have to divide these?
No, because those is going for recommendation now. I cannot hire them later.
Uh, the second one is Karen Kirby. Uh, if the name sounds familiar, he works here at the ambulance barn. He also works at the hospital in Big Sandy. Uh, he expressed interest in doing uh, extracurricular as well. He also works at the Loma post office. So anywhere he could fill in here, like help out.
Nice to pick up those guys.
Yeah, it is nice.
Have you had any other communication with the gentleman?
Yeah. I haven't heard anything else from
Okay.
that gentleman. Uh, Brian called him tomorrow, but I'm not expecting.
He pulled out of the custodial position, there may be each one of them.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, we'll see.
Kirby licensed or?
No, he would need everything as well.
Everything.
Yeah. But he's very eager to start and get on, so as soon as we get approval here and we get his background checked and everything back, we'll give the ball to one on giving him training to get him licensed, so.
It's nice to have a couple of new options.
It is. It helps out greatly. Um. But always, always, always looking for more. So always spread the word.
Let me know if that, if you have to talk to that other guy.
Yep.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, will do. And then the last thing I have is, we kind of loosely talked about donating our uh, old route bus to search and rescue. And I just wanted to double tap on that and make sure that we're still good to do that.
Okay, so we will need a motion to do that.
That's a great idea.
Because I mean, we don't get nothing portrayed in, and they're going to utilize it as a command vehicle, so they're going to retrofit some stuff on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Bye bye.
Opposed?
Alright, I got.
Oh. Russ, you're up.
Jenny? Never know. Um. We had a meeting um earlier and right, we go over that part. Um, we did have some new projects and stuff like that, that while we were doing pricing on um throughout the summer, there's been, uh, or this last winter, we were talking about different things and we kind of got pricing on the elementary roof and a few things like that. We can go through that at that point or right now. Um. The project update, the junior high girls' shower is completed and Larry cleaned it today and should be ready to use. Um, there's a few little things that I need to, um, we had trouble with one of the panels and to pass it back into the wall. Um. Power is complete. Liberty did a great job. Oh, let me go backwards here on thank you notes. Um, and this is really, really important. This, this one's a top notch. This has one right at the very top. Um, Larry is retiring at the twenty-ninth and we all know that and, and he is. He lets me know every day. I'm telling you, he's carrying a bag with him and uh, he has done the twenty-ninth and, and um, he is uh, he came back and helped sell and saved our district. Um. And took care of the building like he normally does in a great fashion and, and spent the summer here again, so. When you do see him, thank him. I mean, he, he's carrying his baggage. He's ready to go. Um, and, and we do have a new hire tonight um, that he's training and this kid is, he's already right above everything and ready to go, so. Um, and Brooke and Danny and Cory and Kate have been they've been painting and cleaning and doing everything and the buildings are all in great shape and look good. Um, and a couple other ones, Northwest Energy, Josh Anderson did a great job with getting this online. Uh, the project got kind of stymied there and, and Mr. Hill knows about this and we got kind of a stymie and we had to go mafia and, and um Josh came on and got a hold of his people and uh, we put it back on track and, and um, we didn't get the delay that they were hoping to. We we were later by a week than we wanted to be, but um, we still were online. And they got that project completed, blances and uh, they've been, they've been really spot on. Um, they got this shower thing done, got everything going and, and working on a few other things around the school right now, so. Um, the plans have been really good towards the summer. Um. Again, the junior high locker room is ready to go and I couldn't be any more excited because I'd always thought that that was just a terrible place to send any kind of visiting team and when we have tournaments and stuff like that. And um, a little bit more spruce enough, it'll be ready to go. Um, some paint or whatever. Um, the plumbing is continuing. It's elementary. Um, they're getting some new toilets put in and um, I was telling the committee that the one half of the building from the, from the library, basically all the way around to the primary, we'll, we'll be opening with that portion of the building. That was already pre-designated. We would not get to the upper end of the building from the library to the auditorium. And so um, we're, they'll, they'll work on that as as they finish it up here, they'll start working on that portion, but we will be open on those of the toilets and um, primary is pretty much ready to go right now. Kitchen was all but one, a couple fittings on one uh, the new dump box that they put out of the um dishwasher. So everything is going there. Um. heaters have been removed. They're going to start working on the install. Um, they hope to be here on the second week of September with the install and before that they'll go down to the crawl space and get everything plumbed in for the um, zone and get all those valves put in before they get there so that they can just put those in in a day or so. Gym floors are finished and done and we can go through this other section if you want.
Either way. What do you want to do? What is, you're on the road.
Um. As we talked about, one of the meetings and, and Kelly had a point on trying to find um outside doors on uh, water softeners and we did. And blances and do those two water softeners for eight hundred dollars a piece. And they will be specific to the area, the kitchen and the cafe. And this can be one of those things that the state is already, you know, and everything has to do with regulations. Um, they, they, when the county comes around, Bob, comes around, um. He looks at the spots on the silverware and tells you, you gotta get more this and that. Well, that's our water. But we have those softeners that are operational right now and that's going to be one of the things on our dishwashers that we need. So those expenses, um, I'm asking for recommendation to, to uh, allocate the thirty-six hundred to blances, put those in. By going blances, they'll service them and if they're out of adjustment, they can come and adjust them versus somebody in Great Falls. Um, again, in talking to Craig, he said they've got quite a few of them around and they're working really well, but if something happens, they're right there to get it fixed and it's not going to be um, calling somebody out of Great Falls. We did talk about getting the trees trimmed um sometime this summer. And uh, we did have a price from um Brock Miller at sixty-nine hundred. And that's um, I think five or six trees involved in that. One of them is that one over here at T nine that's a complete tear down. Um, and it's going to fall down and then the price doubles, like you said, at night, when we have to come out in the storm, it's going to double, so. We talked about the elementary roofing project that we uh, had all looked at before. Um, we talked to the people over here, we're after roofing out of Helen Montana that just did the forum hotel. And they came over and inspected our roof system down at the elementary to be um, their kitchen, the very portion of the primary and the hallway of the primary coming out of a price of fifty-three, six hundred. And that's using that last summer dirt that they use over there and repairing some of the edges and stuff like that before they spray that on there. Um, that one turned out really well and I went over quite a few times and watched them do it and how they were doing it and, and uh, it turned out really well, so. That price is in there installing grease craft and new sewer line on Shoto Street out of their cafe down here. Um, we have two different individual blances. We have the grease trap and plumbing and two reverse construction, which is Dave and I don't know his last name. Um, yeah, the Seeley and the twins, um, the graduate laughter. Um, nineteen-two hundred is the total price on that and they would put in a whole new sewer line out of the kitchen and, or cafe and go out to Shoto Street. That includes all the, the back build, the, the asphalt and everything to patch the hole. And then we just talked about um, getting better guards and prices on stuff like that, so.
That, we can, just when we get to the committee report, we can move it on this again, after we get a budget report and everything. Because we haven't made it, we ran out of time, so we have, don't have a recommendation for the board or anything on it, then. At that time, we can hear how, whether we have to work with and make a decision on what we can do. Does that work? The rest does a lot better job of reporting it all than I do, so. Thanks.
Thanks, Russ. Hey, guys, um. It's all, we're going to start again here soon. So this has been a busy month. Some of our coaches and myself, we were just at the coaching clinic, uh, statewide coaching clinic in Great Falls. I went uh, to some of the MHSA um, in the athletic director conference and I went to some coaching and um, it was a, it's a great place to go with a lot of knowledge is there. Uh, I've spent a lot of time, thank you to Russ and and to Cory. I spent a lot of time cleaning up storage and locker rooms and discovering this building now that I get to be up here. Um, Cory did a great job repainting the locker rooms and Larry's been cleaning them, so like Russ said, they're going to be much nicer to put our people up in. Um, I've been going through all of the, and cleaned all the trophy cases and read it all that. And hopefully it'll all just look real good here in a couple of days when everybody comes back.
By the way, that's never been done.
Never been done?
You're the first one to.
Oh, I don't want to do the candidate. It's, it's in the middle, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
They, they've done bits and pieces, but no, we're just taking them.
We're working on, next, next summer, we'll keep going, but.
Now with a complete job.
No. Thank you. Um. I'm really glad to see the rain gone because I'm tired of the, we've kind of, um, not as bad, I don't know, I don't know what happened, but I didn't quite clean up as much water in the wrestling mats at the end, but I was tired of cleaning those up, so I'm glad that it's slowed down. Uh, practice starts this Friday for high school. Football, high school volleyball, high school cross country, cheer and middle school football in order for them to have their appropriate number of practices needed. And then on following Monday, we'll start middle school volleyball, middle school cross country and middle school tennis with their practices. Um.
Football's Monday.
Uh, football's Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, otherwise they don't have practice with play games, so.
On, on. Okay.
Okay, um. MHSA has launched a new program that houses everything for us, and so it's um it's where I put all of our schedules and all of the referees and I put in all of our, it's all of our staff and all of their eligibility that they have to do and then all of our students, I'll create the rosters and all of their eligibility and um. It launched August first, so it's it's been busy. It's been trying, um. But we're in the same boat as every other school. Uh, there's a big long list of mandatory requirements on my part. Um, some of them are working, some of them are not, but we're going to get there, so uh, being we're no worse off than other schools, I, I think they realize that they've just got to roll with us and roll with it here, but we've been working on that. So I spent the last couple of days of registration. Uh, we're going back a little bit old school to, I am keeping all of the data for the children on paper. Um, we'd had a computer program in the past that MHSA used. This new one, I think, has the capabilities, but nobody could really answer our questions yet. I didn't have answers, so most of us have decided to just keep and file everything and go through that and then we'll learn the system as it progresses. Um. Talking before we started, we are moving to class B and so that'll be a little bit of a new adventure. Um. I've been here long enough that I grew up playing, come here to play in class B, so it's a little bit like going home, I guess, but it'll be exciting. I think we've got everything on the calendar that we have so far. Um. A lot of pieces that I'm, a lot of things, places will change that we go, but the way things work are the same. I just wanted to see if you guys have any questions about the movement or anything. Okay, um. And then to wrap it up, I just have a couple of hires to recommend. Um, I thought I'd done this one, but I had not, so I apologize. Middle school tennis, Miranda Lynch has run it in the past. Emily Engen left, so I would like to um recommend Miranda Lynch and sister Deanna Farmick to run the program and Marta Ferguson would like to volunteer to assist them as needed. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Oppose? Um, we advertised the assistant high school wrestling as Riley was about as asked to be put as volunteer. And I would like to recommend uh, a previous coach back to the position, Tyler Starman as the assistant basketball wrestling coach.
So moved, second. Everybody all informed?
Oh, I, I will recuse myself in this one. Um. Okay, so who made this? That's who I see, yeah. Any questions? Yeah, all those in favor?
Alright.
Oppose? Okay. Um, and we had advertised for an assistant high school track coach as Connor McIlip has plans to um move on to warmer weather. And so I am in talking to Mr. Gilbreth. He has great knowledge of throwing and he has expressed interest in coming from the middle school to the high school position. And so I would recommend hiring Damon Gilbreth as the assistant high school track coach.
So. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Oppose?
You'd advertise the middle school position later in the year?
I will, yeah. We, I didn't rehire them yet.
Yeah.
The middle school ones, so yes, we'll, we'll have to advertise and then that was always kind of that. How many kids are going to be there? How many people do we get or need? So we'll judge that a little bit, yes. Um, I did have one resignation from uh, a position I already asked you to hire that you did, and that is Jenna Botts from middle school robotics. She feels that she needs to bank out of that. And so we will need to, I just want you to know, we will need to advertise for that position as well. And we will still have, we still have middle school wrestling coaches advertised. Um, we just need one or two.
Two.
Because Damon's not.
Yeah, yeah, he's just going to be the winter host.
Okay. Yeah. Um, and then fall host is still advertised. And did I forget anything? I think that's what we have right now. Okay. So if you know someone. Some people are starting to run away from me, but I'm trying. Um, and that's all I have unless you have any questions. Alright, thank you. Thanks, Jamie. Okay. We are ready.
Fun to get old, isn't it?
It's fun to get old, yeah. It's gonna be like, because I holler up here. Yeah, pin the wall, it can be dangerous for it. I should come up with a better story. Eventually, or something like that. Um, okay. Are you guys ready to saddle up for success to talk about the elementary school for the upcoming four year? Yeah, okay. Awesome, so um.
Should we stretch first?
Should we stretch first? Yeah, that's something, yeah, stand up. You're actually going to have to wheel me back around over there. Um. So it's been great. We've been busy and back in the office, working on getting dates planned for our back to school events, sending information out to parents and registering new students. So far, we have between eight to ten new students and I think some more coming out of the. And I think some more coming out of the woodwork, so we'll have a more official numbers for you during that September board meeting. Um, one thing I would love to call attention to is at the um end of last year, I had Emily Anderson approach me about reestablishing parent teams. And so we've rebranded it, um, she and her, her group of parents that are willing to help out, they are called Little Foreign Helpers now. But they've been doing a great job at supporting our school and getting ready to kick off the school year. Seems like they've got great positive energy, um, and really have a lot of enthusiasm in terms of supporting their teachers and our staff. So they planned a few events, um. We're gonna do a playground cleanup day with the help of Russ making sure, like, we'll make them do the work, but we just have to have the sand in the paint, right? I had talked to you about this, don't act like this right now, okay? And so anyways. So we're gonna do a playground cleanup day on August nineteenth, and then we're gonna host um on the twenty first of community barbecue for our school. And we'll piggyback off of we have our kindergarten roundup this year on the twenty first, we'll have that at the elementary playground. We'll do that from four to four forty-five and then we'll have our barbecue, so we're excited for that. I went um and and I, I feel like it's important to have, um, I've been attending the meetings so far and. Um, just to make sure that there's some communication between the parent team and the school. Emily and I went out earlier this week and handed out donation letters to businesses. Um, with some of the different projects they're doing, they're working on establishing medical kits for all of the different classrooms, which is super great. Because there's a lot of kids that are running, you know, no more blood on the carpet, just. Um, and then, so they're also, they're working on that, um. And then working on a couple of other different projects as well, so awesome, super great energy, we're very thankful for that and hope to continue that throughout the year. We have our back to school nights. At the elementary school set for August twenty-sixth, um, and from five to six thirty P M. Uh, so that's always a great time for families to come in, kids can bring their school supplies. And that was all sent out in that information that's more I sent you guys earlier. We're also working on finalizing some schedules, um, as Jamie mentioned, Jenna Botts is taking a step back right now due to some family. Family happenings, and so we're super duper gonna miss her, she's great, and we hope she comes back, so. We're revamping some schedules, making sure that we can continue to support kids in the same way we have. And maybe being a little bit creative and about how we go about that. Um, we also have been, our um special education teacher, Justin Cartwright, has been working diligently with Jen Longfellow. Who she hired as our speech path through C C J F, but she's got some great resources in terms of revitalizing um special. I don't, and I don't know if you wanna put this in the paper, but then even like special education schedules, so that each of our kiddos. That are maybe more life skills kiddos that require a lot of extra support, um, and. An alternative approach to education, have customized schedules, we're rotating parents through working through those kids. And have some more support set up in place for that, so I'm super duper excited about that, because I think that that's one thing as our school. And so we're seeing a lot of heavy needs in our special education room, so excited for that. And um. Also, I've been busy working on making sure that all of our students are rostered and ready to go for our beginning of the year assessments. We're also going to be starting with MAP and I'm excited about that. I haven't thrown my computer yet as I try to roster them and figure it all out, but I think that that will be a great, a great program too, once we get everything handled. Do you have any questions? Yeah, tell me more.
I apologize, but there's a typo, did you have the birthday called the twenty-fifth?
Oh.
It's actually the twenty-seventh, sorry.
It actually is the twenty-seventh.
Um, I I just wanna point out that the measure of academic progress from APP.
Yeah.
Is assessment we're gonna give this year grades three through eight. The fact is, is that we are in need of the district of collecting data uh that extends into the middle school. And that can inform us about our instruction in the high school. And so with the way the mask testing, the state testing has gone, we still haven't gotten our results from last year. And whereas MAP will be almost instant data back to us, it's great information, it's, it comes with a price tag, of course, but. We we bought a a subscription, a yearly subscription this year. That encompasses, we have enough kids from three to eight to be able to.
Sure.
Assess those kids in math and in reading and language arts. And uh it'll, it'll, we need to move forward with collecting better data across the grade levels, including like.
Yeah.
So it's a really good step forward and I added my report, but I'll say no. I've asked Roxy to be the testing coordinator for the school district. And so that the conversation, the the questions I get and whatever, I'm filtering them through her and she's taking care of them. And God bless her for that, uh, organizing the the map testing that's gonna start in the fall, we have three.
Yeah.
Three sittings of the map testing this year.
I think it'll be really good, like, um, I think Mast is great and and was really promoted by O P I as a similar test to MAP. So we, we do see our results, but the kids can't be retaught or retested on anything, it shows no growth. It's like the idea of a summative test, but it just happens three times a year instead of at the end of the year. So I think MAP will be really great, it's gonna be a new way, we're, so we're moving away then at our elementary school from Dibbles. There's kind of a huge shift and so, but I, but I think that Dibbles has a lot of focus on fluency and pace in reading. Whereas MAP is gonna dig deeper in terms of comprehension and application of skills and then also will give us a picture in that. We have some other incentives as well that we can use, but then can help our middle school teachers as well, kind of as they transition us.
The thinking would be that uh cost dependent, but we'd be thinking about doing three through eight this year. And possibly the following year, three through nine.
Yeah.
And then we can decide from there, if we collect that data and see how it's helping inform our teachers' instruction, we can go from there.
Yeah.
But again, there's two acronyms on the table here, the state test is called MAST.
Yeah.
Measure of academic standards through year.
And that. Should we, okay.
Yeah, what we're talking about introducing now is MAP, measure of academic progress. Measure of academic progress comes from the N W E A, but I think they're changing their name now because they got fought by somebody.
Yeah.
They were in the North Northwest Education.
Something.
Association, whatever, anyway, so MAP and MAST are two separate things.
Yeah.
So.
And we'll make sure to get lots of information out to about this, us dating to our families for sure, we'll continue the Dibbles K two. I'm still a little bit, and maybe, maybe third, I'm not sure, because phonics is still a pretty important piece of reading there, but. Um, I'm excited about it and I think it'll drive great conversations and I think it'll improve the way we can intervene and support kids. That maybe need just a little bit of some extra T L C. Um, do you guys have any questions about that?
Yeah, what's O P I, is that what they're recommending?
Yeah, so O P I basically recommends MAST and that's it, but but the MAST is really, like I said before. MAST is like an updated S pack, it just happens three times a year, so really in terms of that, it's. Completely summative and you can't really use it to form like inform instruction and then measure any more growth. So I think it's really important to make sure that you're measuring kids three times a year on growth to to, you know, to ensure that you're making progress.
But through the accreditation process, we're also expected to have two different measures.
Correct, yeah.
Well, they keep changing it.
They do keep changing it, and I was just going through today, there are like five different testing plans that I'm working on creating with the help of Chat G P T.
Yeah.
Mind your.
But I'm not the only person in this room that sat the Iowa test to basic skills once upon a time, luckily, but but the fact is, is that. The, it, you're just jumping through the hoops in that point, you're just taking these tests that has no value to what we're actually doing with the school. And that's what we hope that MAP will become, you know? So you can actually use the data, it's, it's informs the teachers as to what things they can do to support our kids, it's, it's a much better tool. And again, we get the information pretty fast, it's all electronic.
Yeah.
They do it online.
O P I is also rolling out a new alternative assessment, so for some of our life skills kiddos down there, it'll look a little bit different for that too. So that entails more training and just making sure that we're in compliance with with that. Um, yeah.
I had one other question.
Yeah.
Especially in special ed uh room.
Yes.
Did Jen and Justin have an aide?
Yeah, they have four.
Oh.
Or five, yeah, we probably have three kiddos that require basically one-on-one attention. And so in order to four, I would say actually. And so we're utilizing where the aides rotate and and we're, and I'm not sure, um, this is kind of gonna be new this year. Where aides switch every thirty minutes to, in terms of like switching with kiddos as well, because working with with one child. With um, it can be super taxing in a long day, so we're trying to switch every thirty minutes. I met with them and so we're utilizing some of our M T S S or R T I programs as well, so like every kiddo now has a specialized program. So what you'll see from spent this year is every kid has a schedule, our life skills kids have full day schedules. And then we've mixed grade level groups as well, we've created learner profiles on all the kids. And so we know kind of what their goals are, where they're weak and what we need to do, and then we fit programs in to make sure that we're meeting their needs that way. So, super excited about that this year, I feel really good, yeah. Really good about that, and seriously, Jen and Justin have worked so hard at that, they've done amazing. Um, Katie and Cory have been doing a great job painting, the school looks very bright and fresh. And the teachers' classrooms already look amazing, so they're ready to rock and roll. Will be, so first day of school will be the twenty-seventh. No.
Yeah.
Yes, twenty-seventh, perfect. Then twenty, twenty-ninth, we will be having our annual back to school carnival. So we'll be doing that in the afternoon on Friday, and obviously with Settle Up For Success, it'll be a little bit of a Western theme. So we have some dads that have volunteered to come in to do like, to demonstrate to kids how to rope. And then some parenting people are gonna help out and do like a trail mix station, we'll have some stick horse races. If I can get my hands on some more stick horses, anybody have any? No? So we're like thinking of like, kind of like Western theme, so that should be, should be a good time, always, always fun. Um, and then, yeah. It feels good, it's always exciting, it's like an exciting time of year to get started. Do you guys have any questions? Okay. Awesome, yeah.
Thank you.
In the yay for cross country. We're ready.
Are you, are, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Oh, that future.
You know what? I might not be running with them to start, but I will. This start, sorry.
Alright.
Okay, ready? Yep, okay, so you each have a high school and an elementary school budget. And we'll do the elementary school first, if that works.
Yeah.
So on each page is a fund. Um, and you'll see our general fund, there is the first page up. And you'll see the adopted budget is your first line, and so the budget on in our general fund, which is the majority of our funding. We have a increase of just five thousand dollars this year. So not much of an increase because we do have decreasing enrollment down there in the elementary school, so that's kind of what drives that. And then you can go to the next page, is transportation. Elementary school transportation is a smaller fund because we just, we, the bulk of the transportation is in our high school. And you'll see that that our elementary school transportation basically supports our individual transportation contracts that we have. For students that are, you know, their parents either drive them to the bus stop, most of them. Um, and then we make that transfer from our elementary school for high school. And tuition fund, fund thirteen, tuition, this is not tuition that you pay to other schools. This fund is special ed. Um, and this fund you do levy for my sibling in. Um, and it's very tricky and very complicated, uh, the tuition funds. And there's a whole worksheet and calculations and everything that goes into it. And and we typically, format and schools as a whole has not used this fund much. It comes out of our one-on-one and our co-op. So that's why you don't see, you know, a huge dollar amount here. Um, there's that one. Um, the retirement fund budget will stay the same as it was last year. On that one, um, we don't, I don't anticipate any high dollar teachers retiring this year, that's where that really gets hit. It's when you have a long-term, you know, superintendent or long-term teachers retire. That's where that comes from, adult education, same as last year. Um, we had a little bit left over in there, you can see there's that other line, they'll say unreserved fund balance, reappropriated. That was the balance that I had in there, so that's your cash balance at the end. So then you just, you just have your budget and then you'll see district tax levy, that's the difference to make the total. Make sense? I guess I should have explained that earlier. But the adult education is easy to see that in, because it's in and out. Technology fund, same thing, um. Adopted budget in the top, that was our cash balance, you'll see the cash balance right there and the unreserved. Um, reappropriated plus um our new. Um, our incoming dollars gets us to our total there. And then our flexibility funds, um, that's kind of our rainy day. Yeah, fun, flex fund used to be a popular thing, now they don't kind of let you save up in there, you use your interlocal fund. So it's kind of a shift, so that money just, this is where I've been paying the extra building stuff out of. So this will eventually probably get revealed up.
Are you funding that again?
The font. You don't fund it anymore.
That's right.
You fund it into the interlocal now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Fund we've all been waiting for, building reserve. So building reserve, so the adopted budget there at the top gives us our total that we can spend for the year, but. This is a little misleading because it doesn't have added in our interlocal loan. So you can use the interlocal loan to get to your total. So, um, I have to finalize that stuff up with um Louise Welch. So, so I mean, we'll have two separate ones, we'll have a interlocal high school and an interlocal elementary school with our levy pass, and they'll be based. On the levy amounts, so we can get a loan for the full amount of our levies. And so that will change, that will add that dollar amount plus the total authorized at the bottom will be your total budget. So I'm very proud of myself, pat myself on the snoopy dog there, proud of me. So on our last levy that we ran. We didn't actually go over and use all of the interest, right, because we paid it as we went. So we actually had money, wasn't necessarily left over, we were just super fiscally responsible. And so now we can use that towards our next project. And that's why the balance is so high in there, is we were super diligent about how we executed our funds the first levy. And didn't spend in interest what we thought we were going to. That's what kind of saved us there. And that's where you see that little bit of difference in funding. That we, you know, as we got our levied money in, we paid our loans so that we could reduce our overall interest as quickly as possible. And we actually paid that monop almost two years early. So.
Good work.
I know, right? I think so, that's. Uh, so then you'll see in there the, um. I mean, I don't know, that, the fifty-three, that is the state major maintenance. So that's where we permissively levy and the state matches us. On that one, so then I just need a vote to approve your elementary school budget. And it's elementary, so it's district one only.
Uh, so move. Again.
Hey, any questions or discussion?
So the voted reserve authority, that's the mill that we ran, right, on the bottom, but so that's. Barely, I mean, that's, so they two thousand three hundred a year, or?
Yeah.
What we.
No, okay, so the total is the authorized total is the total amount of the levy. And the maximum levy is what we'll get each year for ten years.
Okay. Yes.
So that's what you'll see coming every year.
That's the elementary.
That's the elementary, yep. So hopefully, yeah, you can keep your payment. At that dollar amount.
Yeah.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
Then you don't get overextended. So. But if you go, so as we go along, you know, you'll have to pay attention, you know, as we're doing these projects. To make sure that we either can fund them out of there and then not extend the loan, make sure our loan payment never goes above that. Otherwise, you have to dip into the general fund to make that loan payment. Which is what we don't want to. So.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Alright.
That, all of opposed? We're good?
Good, okay, high school. Just the second set there, and our high school budget actually has a seventy, um, seventy-five thousand dollar increase over last year. Um, so we had some of those, that big, you know, eighth grade class move up into our high school. So, uh, that number is up and don't expect, I mean, next year it'll. Crash, so as we have a big class freshman, so we gotta keep an eye on that, um. So that's our general fund there, um, transportation fund. You will see that the adopted budget is, um, we did not have much excess in there. Um, with fuel costs, insurance costs, all those extra. Fun things and parts are expensive, so it's the same as it was last year. Because we were, I didn't feel like we needed to go higher, because we were just right on track with how we ended the year. And that fund, bus depreciation, so bus depreciation, the adopted budget um is based on the depreciation of your. Assets at the bottom, um we use our max depreciation every year. On those items, um. And our bus depreciation, it does look, the adopted budget does look lower there, because we have um. Call it encumbrating, where I already set money aside. Because remember our bus depreciation fund looked huge, but we brought those two buses, so it's encumbered, so it comes off this. So you're not seeing that encumbrances on your budget, where you see them on. Um box, so it looks a little odd there. Where, you know. You haven't spent it, but you've spent it, you know, because you've said to decide. So that's that budget there. And then, you know, as those new buses ru- pull into rotation, it goes up because you, you know, they have a higher dollar. Amount on them. And tuition fund, same thing as the elementary school, it's not something that we heavily utilize, so it just stays. Whatever was remaining in there, retirement fund, same thing, the budget is the same as it was last year. Adult education, um same as well, budget is the same as it was last year. Technology fund, also budget is same as it was last year. Um we did, I did learn that you can, you have to spend whatever you levy for in your technology funds every year. Um that's a new thing, it used to be able to kind of save it up for expenditures, but whatever you levy for, you have to spend out of there. And now that we no longer have code funds to help support our technology in our schools. We'll blow through this pretty easily every year, and it might be something that as tariffs and the price of computers and Chromebooks go up. We may have to look at voting for an increase, because I can never levy more um. Than the what is um set there in the district mills. Um because of how technology levies work, unless we go through the process and choose to. Change it, because it is one of those permissive levies, so the state kind of dictates. Where you're at, unless you take it back out to the voters, and then it can go back as a permissive. So that's kind of a tricky one that has to be.
Twenty thousand can be prepaid eventually.
Eventually, yeah, I think so.
In the next couple of years.
I think so.
Where's the income from? Uh.
Insurance. Insurance?
Yeah, the kids pay insurance.
They do, and so we spend most of that out of there too for Chromebooks, because I mean they're every kid in our district, which. I think you guys should pat yourself on the back too, because this doesn't happen in every district, every student in our district has their own Chromebook. I mean, first grade through seniors. Um lots of school districts, it's only middle school, high school, physics sometimes. Um but all of our students have access to one and we don't have computer lab. So trying to keep all that up.
Yeah.
So you know. Um actually Carly rotates them through, there isn't a student that has a Chromebook that's more than four years old. Because they just don't last that long. Um so when they like come up here, seventh graders, they're new, so all seventh graders get brand new ones, they're not allowed to take them home. And then hopefully that Chromebook stays with them for a while.
Yeah.
Um and then you'll see, you know, the juniors and seniors and their Chromebooks, they're like, oh boy. What what have you done with that? And then, you know, put and Mrs. Bayou lets them put stickers on them and and some of them, it's like, man. Looks like it's been through a war, like, oh, it's fine, it's fine, it's still a little tape on it, you know? Um so we between the technology fund and the student's um Chromebook technology fee. We seem to get them all covered, because remember we used our technology fund for our new phone system. And the new cameras to and the new fobs, so that's we sometimes use that for too, as well as um. Yeah, we're gonna in the next couple of years, it's gonna, you don't have to really turn with that, I think, especially as enrollment decreases. And, you know, wages and everything else go up, yeah, stuff.
We're always creative, we're as made work.
Um twenty nine in that flip funds, that's your interlocal. Fund there, um so we've got a little bit in there. Um we do use that, you know, or the last year used that to save for some of these building repairs before the levy passed, so that kind of took a hit. So hopefully in the next couple of years, we can be fiscally responsible and build that back up. And now the high school building reserve. Um is obviously much smaller than the elementary school, but we haven't had a levy run in high school in. A long time, I think it was like two thousand nine. When the roof got fixed, so it's been a while. So um it does have the same major maintenance on there, the match from the states. Um and you can see there the reserve voted levy versus the permissive levy on there, breaks it out. Um. So and then it gives you on the bottom again your total and what you'll get every year in your levy. So.
Any questions on that?
And then again, you'll add your interlocal loan funds to that too to increase your overall budget authority. So and that's when we're doing these building projects, you can't, because the building reserve is a budgeted fund. You can't ever exceed your adopted budget, so that's where, you know. We see, you know, we have the levy and we have that total of our amount. You can't budget for that whole dollar amount every year, so that's where you have to watch it. Unless the interlocal gives us the full amount, which it sounds like they're going to, so then we have that kind of. So that's where the very first year I was a clerk, I got my hands slapped. Because I, yeah. Steve didn't, yeah, Steve didn't tell me, and yeah, but I had to go to like O P I D. Anyway. That is that one, any questions on high school?
Looks good.
Yep, so we need a motion for that one.
Sold.
Hey, any other questions, discussions? If we're all good, then um all those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed?
Okay, then the next one, the trustees report. I did not have the trustees report completed because I was waiting on final retirement gap B sixty eight numbers from T R S. And I have not gotten those yet, so when I get those numbers to fill that in and complete that, I should have that for you first for me. Although the caddy, yeah, okay. Obsolete property, um the last time, last board meeting we came to with obsolete property, I have a elliptical and a treadmill. No one has come forward saying they want those lovely machines, so. Think we're just going to dispose of the machines, they neither have one, one of them function a hundred percent properly, so. We now can just get rid of them. And then I am in. Yep. Then I have one other obsolete property item, there's a small kiln down at the elementary school that no one uses. Um it will come as is, um I'm not sure if it works or not, it's been unplugged for a while, I think it's just taking up space, so. You've got it, huh?
It did work.
It did work, but.
We put the coils on that.
Yeah.
Is it, is that the only kiln down there?
No.
No, we have the great, great.
Okay, so that's what the adult ed, so.
Yeah, they use the big one and not the little one and. They just, yeah, nobody's turned it on, Wanda who runs our adult ed and Amber, so they never use it. Wanda said she hasn't plugged it in in like three or four years, and they would like to space that. So.
So it's two twenty.
And then um we do have lots of, um it's not on my obsolete property list, but we have lots of um. Bookcases, if anybody wants a bookcase. And I'll do these cleaning. Then everybody wants a bookcase, you know? Or you give them away just for a few. You want a bookcase?
No.
Oh, the white pickup.
Yeah, more of that type.
Yep. So I need a vote on the white pickup and account to add them to obsolete property.
I moved to add all that stuff obsolete property.
I'm gonna do a middle one pickup. Why do you care what you think it is? Eight hundred.
Give it what you want, I'm interested.
Give it change if ever.
But just. Let's not bite. Yeah, whatever somebody opposes though.
Best offer?
Best offer, yeah.
O B O on both items?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So room?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we had to clean it out, get ready to go.
That is all I have.
Well, I had a question. And maybe I missed it, but I thought we were like for projects that we started, do you have a spreadsheet? Um like what we pay.
I do, I haven't updated it, because I just thought the um we paid, I paid lots of these invoices today. Um and so I haven't updated, so I didn't bring it, but I can email it out to all of you building.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you, Ben.
So, yeah, between finishing the budget and school registration and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and bills came in late this month, I just did it all finalized.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I can email that out to all of you. Yep.
Yeah, we still have a motion on tables, so all those in favor?
I agree.
Oh, city.
Yeah, we're good. You're up.
Okay. Uh I'll send this out electronically tomorrow, there was a couple of minor tweaks in the twenty twenty, twenty five, twenty six calendar. You'll see the revised, it's just uh some some explanation at the bottom underneath a couple of months, so I'll send out the new version that's attached to this. Parents just are getting an email today. Uh telling them that we had to adjust our bell calendar bell schedule here at the Millsville High School. And uh. Sorry to say we're kind of cheering or grumbling, they'll be amongst the students, but here, there's there's two things about this, first about the the belt timing itself. We had to adjust the bell timing to account for the fact that we were very low on the number of hours we're required to have. We were, it was reported to Roxy Allen that we were actually below what we were supposed to. And uh the law is a little bit confusing, but we created a system where we increased our daily class period timing. From forty eight minutes to forty nine minutes, Monday through Thursday, and from forty to forty two minutes on Friday. And what that results in is uh same length of lunch period, but five minutes earlier start and three minutes later out. Is all it results in, okay? And then on Fridays, it's uh. Seven minutes later out and a shorter lunch period, but we're also starting at eight o'clock. So if by doing that to the timetable, we didn't have to give up any other days. So we kept the time, the calendar that you you approved, it kept the integrity of that calendar together. But so we just simply adjusted the daily timetable to accommodate that. So we don't have to, um we didn't have to lose any of the days, the other thing is, so that's the daily timetable. The other thing it did by adding this extra time is it let us build in one additional emergency um uh. Not dismissal day, so the state allows us to, in the event of an emergency like we have the water pipe, right? We are, we have two built in, the state gives us, we just have to ask for the emergency, the um. Uh not, you know, we're not at school because of an emergency, we get two, but this would allow us to have one additional uh day. So really in the it's snow day, we have bad weather or whatever, we can take one of the, one of those three days or all three of those days without having to make the day up. And it's nice to have a little bit of a of a buffer, better to not use them and, and have them and not use them and not have them and have to come to school on Saturday. So in the end, we adjusted the timetable just ever so slightly, most of our high school, middle school kids are here by eight o'clock anyway. So the bells still, we have had a bell ringing at seven fifty five already, there was a bell at seven fifty five, one at eight, one at eight oh five. We used to start classes eight oh five, so we're simply starting at eight o'clock, and like I said, the line share people are here. I'll hear some grumbling on the twenty seventh, but um I'll give them hugs, they'll be fine. Um with that middle school, high school course registration this week, it's not to be understated that the hands of many make for light work. Um Cali's been helping, Connie's been helping, Roxy's been helping, Patrice McDonald was in today and uh helping Amy and and Tenera, it's been extraordinary. Um a lot of kids through the building last two days, it's been a lot of hustle and bustle, it certainly feels like school's about to start. With all the people that run in and out of our office, so thank you to all those that have been helping, and so far it's been going really, really well. Um I don't have it to show you tonight, but um Roxy and I were able to save the school district a little over two thousand dollars because. We've used an appraisal tool the last year where we paid a subscription that the cost is two thousand dollars. And we didn't feel like we were getting any, a lot of value, I mean, we we were appraising our teachers using a tool that they provide. But we didn't feel like it was worth the expenditure, so um we abandoned that two thousand dollar uh tool. And I settled for one from Google for thirty five dollars. So we saved two thousand dollars and it's a tool that we're creating, we're generating and creating ourselves. It's not fancy, but it still allows us to decide the things we want to, how we want to observe our teachers and the format in which we give them feedback. And that's what it's all about, the the actual device, whether it's on a paper electronically, whatever, is inconsequential to the information, the the conversation you have. With a particular teacher, so um I don't have that to show you tonight, but um we're still working, it's still a kind of a under construction. As we kind of figure out how to to create the form, and you can see it electronically or you can print a hard copy, and we're still playing with the verbiage. In it, so because we get, it's all generated by us, so we get to generate it, so.
I think that's one thing that is great about it, is we can generate it to fit the needs of our staff. And what we value in terms of instruction, we want to see in our schools, because our school is not the same as other schools, it's better.
Yeah, so we're playing with some of that verbiage and whatever, and I'll I'll be happy to share that with you at a time when we, we feel like we have a kind of lockdown. Our intent is to roll it out to the teachers on the twenty uh fifth, so they have a chance to see before we start the school year, so I'll sort of bring that to the September board meeting. Couple dates, uh new teacher orientation, I only have two new teachers, but that'll be Monday, August twenty fifth. All of our staff returns in the afternoon that day, the new teachers are coming in the morning, uh all the other teachers return in the afternoon on the twenty fifth. A lot of a bit of a kickoff rah rah here in the library, uh with my favorite people bingo. And then uh we're having an all staff birthday on the twenty sixth, we're actually gonna have a breakfast in the morning at the elementary school. And I'm gonna show a film, a motivational film in the elementary other part, we're gonna do that this year, it's kind of a fun little change to the plan. Um you also heard about Roxy being the testing coordinator, coordinator, I mentioned that before. And note that the uh we are having a bit of a challenge with the front door fob system, Carly's working on it. But they don't believe, the other fobs are working, but for some reason the one on the front door is not, and they're working on a solution. In case you hear that or somebody says something, key still works, but you just have, we just have to be um aware that that's a under construction, we're working on a solution. Um you'll also see in this new letter. Yeah, uh so the calendar things, just to note that uh the Booster Club Fall Sports Kickoff is on Monday, the twenty fifth. And that um we have a grade seven parent student orient, student parent orientation on the twenty sixth. And we're working it out around the elementary school back to school night, and um as Roxy mentioned, our first day is the twenty seventh, and the energy is filling the air. So that's pretty cool. Any questions about those items?
I must have missed it, it was the meeting, Mrs. Hanson.
So um they are just now, you might recall that she originally had submitted a letter of resignation.
Yeah.
And then submitted a letter to me asking for grace that they would put their house up for sale, and once that happened, once their house sold. She'd give us six to eight weeks, basically, and they uh just this week now are putting their house up for sale.
Yeah.
So we have not, I've been fishing, we've talked to, talked to several people, done a couple kind of casual interviews, followed up with a couple people. But once that house sells, we will advertise in earnest and look to hire that decision, so. Here it is now, the middle of October, uh middle of August, I would say by the beginning of October, we could be looking at somebody newer there.
Yeah.
Or middle of October-ish, something like that, a good question. Okay, um you have before you, we have some handbooks to um for your consideration. Uh the elementary school had some revisions made, Roxy helped me here.
Yeah, Roxy Allen really, to be honest with you, she went through and just updated um more just uh housekeeping items. Changed names, and then there were some things on the page that she updated to reflect the same in the high school faculty, so.
We'll take a look, we'll have a second meeting next month.
All the.
Anything ever taken, do you want to highlight, Roxy?
Um just like the compliance coordinators, um was a section that was changed on page twenty. Green were things that were stressed out. And that's about it, the changes were super minimal, so the majority of the changes that you'll see are on pages eighteen and twenty and then on page two. So. That's it.
To follow that theme of first reading, you have before you also three other handbooks. handbooks for your consideration as a first reading, the school bus driver's handbook, same uh as she mentioned, the new things that have been added are in yellow, you have the school district uh uh route transportation handbook, and then you have the classified stack handbook. For your consideration for first, on the first reading. Any questions about those? Give me the number. Wait about that soon. Light reading in the next couple of weeks. Tonight then, we're also looking at the second reading of the middle school, high school handbook, and I would uh ask for your adoption of that.
So move for your motion.
So moved. Second.
Bye.
Question?
And any discussion questions? Bye.
Bless you.
No, I think we could all, we can all that special panel last.
Think so.
Meeting.
There, there again, the, the changes, the updates have been, have been uh heard. And um yellow indicates change, red indicates something removed, and we're all addressed, as to my knowledge.
Yep.
So all those in favor?
Okay.
Oppose?
Also an ask for your um acceptance of those, the, the second reading of the back of the handbook.
We'll need a motion for that one as well.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
I agree.
Oppose?
Okay, and I'm gonna hand out again, this is a copy of the Gymnasium and Weight Room Community Use Agreement. And the two items, there was discussion about this at the last meeting, and um I would draw your attention to the back page, the two items uh listed in yellow, the recommendation that Jamie and I had put before you was that the yearly fob fee would run from July first until June thirtieth. And um looking down below, the second item was that upon request, the yearly fob fee can be prorated from to sixty dollars for six month fob access, which would run from July first to December thirtieth, first, excuse me, or July first, January first to June thirtieth, as it states. So that, those were the adjustments made based upon um our discussion, input from the board, uh input from community members. Um and it, it's still my opinion, and and I'll let Jamie speak if she'd like to, that um again, we wanna there's not a lot of people that are using this, but we still wanna, in my opinion, we still wanna, it's not a lot of money, I think we need to minimize the the uh human capital it takes to manage this, and that's why we adopt, we proposed the six month period of time um for the policy.
And then I was not here, I apologize for not being here last time, and so my question for you is, did you have discussion on if you pass this and I'm effectively providing refunds?
So we began to make a motion to that effect, but because it was the first reading, we said we had to wait till this month to discuss that point.
I just. Okay, so we within.
Jeremy, can I say something?
Yep.
Okay, um well, yeah, last month I have started to make a motion and he tabled it to go ahead and accept the, or the policy um as listed, but um also adding to that to refund the three families that have already paid um had already paid the full amount for last year, even though they have been using it for less than six months, to go ahead and refund them half of the um amount.
And to repeat what Jo- Joellen said is, there, there were three, we.
I thought there were four. I looked back and there was one.
Is that, was that?
Yeah, there should be four.
Okay.
We missed. There was one, like, January second or something.
Okay. Okay.
So offering them for, they can choose not to accept it, but we could offer them a, a refund of sixty dollars, so that would be my motion.
Would it, could they prorate the next year if they want to keep the fob, isn't that what we?
What gets messy.
Okay, so it was just like go through the transactions, start from scratch?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just the lighting first.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do we need to approve this first and then?
Oh, you can do it all on one.
I think you should separate them, is there maybe a difference of opinion on that refunding?
Okay, okay, separate them.
Um so we're gonna separate it out, Joellen will first um vote on the policy that, as it stands with, for the second reading. So.
The move.
So make a motion on the, the policy?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay.
I'll second that. Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, so we're just voting on the um agreement for policy, so all those in favor?
I agree.
Oppose?
No.
So now we just move on to the next one, okay, so we'll need another motion, correct, for the refund?
I'll make that motion to be offered refunds to four, for the four families who have, um, yeah. Who didn't use it more than six months last year.
I'll second.
You have any discussion on that?
Yes, I'm, I'm probably the odd man out here, but I don't think we should do prorated for last year. Or we should start fresh this year, if we have somebody sign up this year halfway through, we prorate that one, but going back in the past, what happens if somebody's too used, and what comes in, goes, well, you did it for this part of it. I think we might be opening a little bit of a can of worms, that's me.
I hope this, this policy is a year old yet, though, when we're, this is a first year. It was just, it's just the, we're within that first whole year of, of actual fob use, this is the beginning of the second year, so uh, yeah, I think our discussions were probably warranted, because we didn't know what you know, everything was gonna look like, so.
Okay, you have a first and second.
Anything else?
Most opposed to the whole refund side of which you're looking at, so.
Dude, I guess I would like to make, uh, I think amend the motion to say that they could re uh donate it back. We need to have that in there? Or do?
The ones that want refund, wanted to donate.
Okay. Okay, we'll just leave it out there, I uh reason that.
Okay. So if we're good, we'll go ahead and vote, all those in favor?
I, I.
Oppose?
Whatever.
So.
One minute.
Time. Or was Will? Kayla and Veronica? Against Dan Dussie? So what do we do?
Fashion poker, you have to figure out.
So either you mustn't die, or you vote, I vote?
I think so.
Yeah, you have to.
I think you have.
Yeah.
You're a tiebreaker.
Look at you.
So you wanted to be a board chair.
I'm in favor for the refund. Okay. Okay. Anything else?
That's all I got, thank you.
Hey, can waiting reports, we'll start with the moving grounds.
Okay, go over it. Russ said everything that we discussed at our meeting, our committee meeting, um we didn't come out with a recommendation at all because we ran, ran out of time. Um so, and if you're hearing our budget, I know we're tight, but there are things that we we do need to maintain and move forward with, I know Russ's priority would be the water softener and the tree trimming as number one. And number two, I for sure feel the tree trimming was pretty important, we've gotta especially after this rain and everything, get plugged gutters and it's coming back to the belly, we've gotta do whatever we can to continue, I don't know what the rest of the committee thinks, and then water softeners kind of another thing that we, kind of like boilers and everything else, we've gotta have them, so, little pain proof. Yeah.
And due to the dollar amount, you don't have to have a vote.
Okay.
It was less than eight thousand dollars.
The rest of it, I didn't get a chance to ask you on the rope, wh- what kind of timeline are they looking at? Is that something they're gonna do this? Faulty yet, or?
Yes.
And if we put it.
You, you, you will push for it.
And if we put it off, it's gonna, going to increase.
Yes.
I.
Well, one thing we could do is, is see where we come out on the interval. We have a little extra, like, you never know.
Right, well, and I'd like to see this spreadsheet.
Yeah, actually, the thing I pulled up on the, like, I feel like the roof is something we need to do, and as soon as we get the final numbers from Milk River, then you'll know.
Yeah.
So once Milk River is finished and given us their final um bill, I think then you make the vote at that time.
Right.
Because what, then you'll know.
Okay.
What is, I mean, you really know where you sit once you get that final bill from Milk River, because we know what the heaters cost.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that, they've been pretty consistent there, and there's not a lot of change orders, but once you get that final bill from Milk River, then you'll know, I mean, really where you sit.
But you feel like we can make the uh water softener and the tree trimming, we can, we can cover that without any hardship, any problem?
Yeah, I mean, the small means to compare.
I understand that, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, that way that that and the sewer line going from this building over to the.
Right, that would be another one.
Another bigger ticket item.
Right, two separate budgets, though.
I know, that's true.
Yep. So I think once you get, you get that final bill from Northwestern Energy, and you get that, or Northwestern Energy and Liberty Electric, we get that final bill from Milk River, we'll know exactly where we're at. And so, and then some final numbers from FICO, because those keep rolling in. Um and then Gary's bill, too. Then you'll know where you sit, and we can vote on those other ones, I would think, pretty rapidly.
So Russ can go ahead without a vote on the tree trimming and the.
Mm-hmm, because it's under the.
And then what you know.
Yep, it's under, yeah, because it's under, I guess, Pat can sign off on that, because it's under the policy's authority, so anything under eight thousand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we'll wait on the others until we get the final budget about.
Yeah, I.
I'd like to see some numbers.
Yeah, yeah, I think that is wise, then you can kind of see where you're at, and then we can vote from there.
Sounds good. Thank you, that's the end of my report.
Okay. Your turn, Dusty.
So, we had a pre-ven stack policies, and we didn't actually get through them all due time. Um we did get through the first fifteen, so I'm gonna, uh with two that we're gonna get some clarifications on, so I'm gonna recommend that we proceed with the first reading on thirteen of these policies, um. The two, two that we had questions on, I believe Pat is gonna do some research on and get back to us, so next meeting we'll have the should have the rest of the policy done for our first reading.
We give them what we need to email out, those thirteen with the recommended options, so you don't have to read them all?
Yeah, that would be great. There, there's, there's quite a list. And like I said, we're, we're only, and I don't think we're halfway through though, that stack that we had, so.
Unless you want to read them out with your.
No, no, that, that'll be, that'll be fine, I can handle that again.
I don't think Dusty's voice can handle that right now.
Um but that's, well, pretty much what I've got, is we got thirteen, or we're.
So do we want to schedule another policy meeting, though, we're going to be in the last two part of the next board meeting?
Um, no, not the next board meeting, I won't be here for the next board meeting, so if we can set it up for a different day before the board meeting, that would be great.
You would want that date down, um, you know, we can.
While you're looking at that date, I have one other thing, um just in the policy committee, this is, um we just wanted to bring your attention to it, this is the, and you guys all have a copy, this is, has to do with the Stars Act and the teachers' union, um because we were eligible and the union and myself came to an agreement of how we were gonna comply, and we just wanted all of you to be aware of it and see it, how we um compromise and were able to comply with the Stars Act this year, to get our teachers a little bit more money, and our teachers' uh union will renegotiate this year in February, so you'll see all of that revised in February. I think, you know, just, the teachers' union, I think, would love some support from our teachers. I think. So.
What? What'd you say, really?
You're proud of me?
You'd be proud of me?
Yeah, Jamie should be proud for some, I mean.
Uh, we need to do it. Uh, next week before?
Yeah, we can do like the second, somewhere in the first through the, yeah.
The second would work for me.
Second?
And, I mean, I've, I've got options that week.
Joellen, would the second work for you?
Just so you know, there is a volleyball game here on the second.
Yep.
Really?
It's not ours, you can't.
Yeah, there's a volleyball game.
Volleyball game.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We might have to move it.
Wednesday the third?
Third, yeah.
What about the third, Joellen?
Um, it's not a great night for me, what time of day?
It would add.
Thursday the first, would Thursday the fourth be better, Joellen?
I, I'm gonna do that week, just as long as it's after six, or six or, six or, six to seven, or seventy.
The Thursday the fourth?
Thursday the fourth.
Yeah. And after six?
Yep. Well, I don't, we do like six o'clock to seven or, or whatnot, or.
I'll be here, I'll be here like right after six, I gotta sign up.
So six o'clock?
Okay.
Do you have one?
Six o'clock.
James is signing up to cook soccer.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep.
Ah. Okay.
Um, are there other committees who need to step involved on that? Personnel, you want to move personnel? I know you're ready, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so we need a personnel committee meeting.
I'll do that for the board, Amy.
Gee, that's, so I think that's Kyla, myself. Will.
Well, Jenny, Joellen, and Kyla.
Oh, Joellen? We're also looking at a personnel meeting with before the um it, or before the board meeting on whatever that day is.
Ninth.
On the ninth? Is that left for you, Will?
Sure. Yep.
There's thirty six o'clock, what time we're meeting?
How long do you think you need, we need? I don't know.
We did six fifteen.
Yeah.
I read, what the difference, very little bit, you know?
Yeah, okay, six fifteen before the board meeting for the.
Or that, not, thing I'm reading.
Right, there's only. What do you want to say more?
Second.
Yeah. And I'll let Kyla know. Sorry. Hey, guys, need another buildings and grounds?
They'll think so. We don't need anything, no, not for now, no, we're good.
Cool, just email and refer to it.
Perfect.
Okay, so I think we're good there, we'll move on to personnel, there's.
I agree, yeah, so I would get to inform you that we've had two resignations, I'm gonna pass those around. Uh one for uh Jackie Aragon was a para here at the middle school, high school, and Genevieve was a para at the elementary school, so we've accepted, received those. Uh when, at the July board meeting, I was anticipating Jackie's resignation in later that week, that's why you didn't have it then, we received both of those resignations. So tonight, I have to, before you to recommend the hiring of Samantha Venison as the resource aide, uh we're pending the, waiting on the background check, but she would replace Jackie Aragon as a high school, middle school para in the research room.
All those in favor?
Okay, her husband, Jordan, uh, my apology, it occurred to me, it's on my list of things to do, I missed it, it was sound like capital thing. But uh, he was, we offered him the position to replace Larry. And it was kind of imperative, because Larry's, I could have gave us, as, as Russ mentioned, the twenty ninth, and we really need to get somebody in there. So with the board meeting being tonight, I allowed him to, he didn't work last night, so tonight was the second night of work, still pending background check, but. Um, we have, he was working out really well so far, so I would kindly ask for your uh, permission to hire him as our high school custodian.
Okay, all those in favor?
Okay, and then finally, as Paul mentioned before, the hiring of two uh, extracurricular and driver, some uh, for the transportation department, Chad. Uh, Hartzell and Helen Kirby. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Great, that's all I got.
So the only thing I have is future second readings. Yep, today we're getting policy meeting, personnel meeting, yep. Um, so a motion to.
So moved.
Thanks, all those in favor?
Thank you.